Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 12th meeting of the Placerville City Council. We are going to go into closed session, but wanted to see if there was any public comments on the closed session items.
It looks like we do not have any attendees at this time, Mayor, and I believe our city attorney has an announcement he wants to make before we go to closed session.
Okay.
I do think, thank you, Cleve, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to do is announce the basis for the threatened litigation matter on closed session, and that is because in the past couple of weeks, I have received emails from Mr. Louis Smith containing two unfiled writs of mandate to be filed in the Sacramento Superior Court. The indications are that they plan on filing them in the court. As of yet, it has not been filed, but I believe that is a imminent threat of litigation, and that's why it's on closed session tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. And no public comments, I see, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn into closed sessions. I'll see everybody in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the, again, the Tuesday, January 12th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Regina, for the flag. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. And we'll go ahead and go to roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
You're.
Councilmember Barelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Councilman.
Here.
I can see you. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, quorum established, thank you. Moving on to item three in ceremonial matters and item 3.1. This is the motion for the city council to adjourn the meeting, sign a die, and appoint the city manager as temporary chairperson.
All right, thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. So at this time, as Mayor mentioned, we have adjourned sin and die. No passionate gavel, obviously, in this scenario, but at this time, I will call for any nominations for the election of mayor for the coming year.
I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Dennis Thomas for the position of mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the nomination and second by Councilmember Taylor to elect Vice Mayor Thomas as mayor for the coming year. All in favor, or actually, I should ask for a roll call vote, I guess, Regina.
Sure, Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and I'll turn it back over now to Mayor Thomas.
Well, well, thank you very much. I would like to make a brief statement before we move on here. If you don't mind, I would like to thank Mayor Saragosa for his leadership, for his leadership over this past year. It is, you have dealt with unprecedented issues in so many ways with the city. You have handled these situations with an eye on preserving our rights for our community while working hard to be sure that people are equally treated and provided safety in our community. And I think that's been a challenging issue on so many fronts. You were handed this pandemic right out of the gate, and it has been on your shoulders pretty much for the entire year that you were mayor. And over the years, I have seen many mayors come and go. And actually, I actually married one not that long ago, so. And I know the expectations going in, and I know it's a lot of hard work through the year, and at the end of the year, there's this culmination of efforts. Your path has been unlike any that I can remember. You have done the most of it with Zoom, and you have done it all with so much grace. And I want to thank you for your leadership and your, your your giving of your time and your energy over this last year, because it was monumental, it was unexpected in so many ways, and yet you, you delivered, you delivered to the city what we needed at that time. And so with that, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. And second, I would like to thank my council and colleagues for placing their trust in me to lead this body over the next year. And as we look forward to the coming year, I have a lot of hope. You know, hopefully, we see some change going forward. Hope we see it in many ways. I am eager to explore new ways of moving our city forward, forward with intention and thoughtful consideration. I know that's a lot of big words, but it speaks, sounds like a politician, but really, what I look forward to doing is evaluating our goals, our objectives, and look at coming up with a strategic plan that has an eye to our future for the city. We've been in a reactionary mode for a while now, and I'd like to see what it looks like to plan for our future in a little more thoughtful way. Not that we haven't in the past. This year, last year's been all about reaction, and so I look forward to maybe turning that tide a little bit and thinking a little more strategically and planning for our community. And at very last, over this last year, I want to express my appreciation for our staff. From the top to the bottom, everybody has done exactly what our city needed to do to be here, to exist in this challenging time. And I can't tell you how much, how important that is to the citizens of our community, and so with that, I want to thank our staff. They have really gone above and beyond to make sure that the city stays whole and stays operating, so thank you. And I guess now we're going to call, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for Vice Mayor.
I'll nominate Kara Taylor.
And we have a second.
I'll second.
All right. Let's go ahead for any other nominations. All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and then get a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa. Oh, excuse me. Mayor, Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Um, um, I, Councilmember Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No. Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
And thank you, Councilmember, now Vice Mayor Taylor, for stepping up to the plate. Really appreciate that. Look forward to that. Moving on. Let's see. Yes, moving on, we're going to go, anything to report out from closed session?
Mr. Just. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor. There is nothing to report as the council did not take reportable action in closed session tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll. Can I get a motion now to adopt the agenda?
Move for adoption.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? All right, pass. Our first agenda. So announcements and presentations to the public. Cleve, I believe there, maybe we should have added this in.
I'm not sure that we really need to. We just wanted to make the announcement, have a brief presentation by Nancy Williams. I think there is some new information that's just come out tonight. And I believe we also have the county Public Information Officer Carla Haas is on with us. So if it's all right, the council under this, these announcements, presentation, if we have a brief presentation by Nancy Williams, I would appreciate it this time.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Williams and also Carla Haas. I know you guys put in extremely long hours, and and just for you to show up here tonight and to help us understand what's going on a little more today is truly appreciated. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Williams.
Okay, thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So thanks. No PowerPoint tonight or anything. This is going to be short and sweet, hopefully. So kind of the big overview, big picture overview is there's still a lot of COVID in the county right now. We've seen our hospital numbers go up regionally, with ICU bed capacity is dropping low, which pushed us into the regional stay-at-home order a number of weeks ago now. And our local hospitals have been, have been hit as well. Things seem to be lightening up a little bit locally, and we've been following the the trend, the state's been following the trends, and I'll come back to this in a little, in a minute, but and didn't really know exactly what, what it would take as far as knowing what they're, we know that they're, they were looking at four-week projections to see the number of ICU beds or the percentage of ICU beds available rise back over 15% again, and so what we've been getting is a daily report that says, you know, the Sacramento region does not, does not exceed it, it is, and is still on the stay-at-home order, so that's pretty much been, been the case there until recently. And today, at about, I don't know, a quarter to 12 or something, I got an email and a phone call from CDPH, the California Department of Public Health, letting me know that the government was going to be announcing a change to that today. Excuse me. Which originally was, we thought was coming out at noon, then we thought it was coming out at 1:30, and then it eventually came out, so effective immediately, the Sacramento region counties are now back out of the regional stay-at-home order because the projected ICU capacities for weeks in the future are back above 15%. So that's really good news, and we're certainly more fortunate than the Southern California counties or even the Bay Area where the numbers are still looking not very good. And that means we go back to where we would be without the stay-at-home order, which is the purple tier at this point. And there's the only thing I think that's different between the purple tier where we were before and where we are now, because our numbers are significantly higher still. And I'll just, I won't explain all the rate numbers exactly, but the thresholds we're looking at on our average daily new case rates per 100,000, and we were in, you know, we never made it as low as the yellow tier, which was the lowest rates. But we were in orange and then red and then purple, we thought was high, and we got into purple when we crossed the number seven per 100,000. Well, we're now at over 50. So things are way, way, way different than even they were when we were in purple before, so we still need to be really careful. We still are, we'll go back to this purple tier restrictions, which are lighter, of course, than the regional stay-at-home order. The one exception is, this actually will not apply very much in our county, unfortunately, is that because, because the rates are so high, the state's going to have a little bit more restriction on the schools going back if they have not already been doing any in-person learning, and I think all of our schools, except for the South Lake Tahoe High School, have had in-person learning to some extent so far, so we won't be restricted by that, but as far as the schools go, we're sort of in, I think, what they're calling deep purple, so it doesn't change anything as far as the business regulations go or anything like that. It's just straight purple. But we obviously have a really, really long way to go before we dip back down into red again, which should loosen things up even more, so. I think that's actually, I'll just mention the vaccinations are, I think, going well, and I'll, I can, Carla Haas will help me answer any of your questions afterwards. She's in the Emergency Operations Center where most of the vaccine planning is happening and is more in touch with that, but you know, the big picture is that vaccine seems to be going, going out of the county into people's arms as almost as quickly as it's coming in, so we're doing a pretty good job turning it around and ordering it as soon as we have an opportunity to order the next orders, and that seems like there's significant demand in the community, so that's going well, and we're expecting much more vaccine in the next weeks to months, and we'll continue to ramp that up. So I think that's all I will say for now, and happy to answer questions. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Are there any more questions? All right, Kara.
Um, in terms of the vaccine, what, what's the timeline for making it more widespread in this community?
I will let Carla answer that one, if she can give a more accurate answer, I think.
Good evening, everybody. Carla Haas, I'm the Communications Director for Eldorado County, and as Dr. Williams noted, I am working in the Emergency Operations Center. I'm going to apologize in advance. I just got home, and you may hear a brand-new puppy squealing and whining in the background, so I apologize for that. But the answer to your question, Councilwoman, is the general public will be allowed to receive their vaccinations in the summer, so we're hoping, I mean, things are going, they're progressing really very smoothly and very well. So right now, it's currently scheduled for summer, but, you know, fingers crossed, we might be able to bump that up into late spring.
Okay, and is there a push to get teachers vaccinated at the schools?
I believe that they are. In fact, we sent out some information to the education community, letting them know that they can start to sign up and let their employees know that they are eligible, starting at the end of this month.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess I noticed today that the chamber sent out something about people who could be on call for extra vaccinations as, as they become available, and so they don't go to waste. Is that something that I heard correctly?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that, Mayor, and congratulations. You're welcome. We, we want to make sure that none of our doses go unused in Eldorado County. Oftentimes, when you open up a vial of the vaccine, you can get more than the allotted dose, so typically, one of the vials may be scheduled to have five doses, but we can actually get seven doses from it. So we schedule for those five doses, but then we're left with two extra doses, and we certainly don't want those to go to waste. So what we have done is we've developed a vaccination optimization plan, and what that allows people to do is to sign up to get an alert on their phone, either a phone call or a text message indicating that there is one of these surplus doses available, and they would come to one of our public health offices, and it would be determined in that call or in that text, the person would know which one within 30 to 60 minutes to receive their dose. So this is all in an effort to ensure that we don't let any doses go unused. And you don't have to be in the, in the phase or the tier that we're in now, so anybody, as long as they're an Eldorado County resident, can sign up for these alerts. You can't just show up at public health and say, hey, I would like a surplus dose. You have to actually sign up and then be alerted and be an Eldorado County resident to receive the dose.
Yeah, Mayor Saragosa, Mike.
I know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a bit. Carla, question on that, if you could give out the information about where residents can go to sign up for that information, to put their name on the list, and then just another question is, are we getting, are these the Pfizer vaccinations, or is it a mix of Moderna and Pfizer? I don't know, it doesn't even make a difference, but I'm just glad we're getting them out there.
Yeah, me too. So thanks for reminding me. So all anybody has to do is go to our county webpage at edcgov.us, and you'll see a big red banner for COVID-19. You'll click on that banner. That takes you to our COVID-19 webpage. On that webpage or on that website, you'll scroll down and you'll see Vaccination Information tab. You'll click on that tab, and that gives you the information that you'll need to sign up for an alert to receive the surplus doses, and the surplus doses are coming in both the Pfizer dose and the Moderna vaccine as well.
Great, and I can attest, it took me all of three minutes to do it. I just went on today and did it, so it's super easy for anybody out there that wants to sign up.
Great.
Patty.
Dr. Williams, would you go over about this, what you said about the schools? Would you tell us again what you said?
Sure, so as our county had, I think, all of our schools, except the high school at South Lake Tahoe, had done at least hybrid in-person learning to date. So the state has, they have some extra requirements that'll be in place for any of the schools that haven't done any in-person learning yet, because they feel there's, it's kind of, it's still going to be a risky time for schools because the rates are so high. So they want to make sure that the schools already have all their processes in place, and so all of ours have done that, except for the South Lake Tahoe High School, so that means we're not going to be restricted. But some of the other counties who have rates really high like ours, their schools will be required to stay in distance learning until, and then this is true for South Lake Tahoe High School, but until our rates, until the rates come down significantly, so I think, I think they were trying to decide between either 25 per 100,000 or 28 per 100,000, which is still significantly higher than, say, our purple tier threshold would be, but a lot, lot lower than where we are right now, but I think we're pretty good as far as they can, our schools can continue to keep, keep the schools, you know, keep the same hybrid model they're doing, or if they feel comfortable ramping up into, into in-person learning, and and there have been a lot of questions about how that gets decided, and I think a lot of it has to do with how much disruption occurs, the more cases there are, so everybody wants kids to be in school, and, but it's, it's just, if they don't have enough teachers, because teachers are out, that kind of thing is pretty tough, so we're trying to keep the school safe and try to keep people to be good at home, so that we won't have to have any issues with keeping kids in classrooms.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Taylor.
Um, thanks. Going back to the vaccine, so if you get this extra dose, do you get it put, do you make an appointment at that time for the booster shot? Or, because, you know, if you, if you get out of order to get that extra dose that's available, do you, then are you out of order the whole time for the booster shot as well?
Yeah, no, you're not. Great question, and you're not out of order, so whenever you get your first vaccine, whether it's by this surplus dose or in any manner that you get your first vaccine, you'll be told when you have to get your second vaccine, and we don't have any concern about there being a problem with, you know, getting any kind of dose, so.
Okay, wonderful.
You'll just, you'll be on that particular schedule.
Okay, I'm really glad to hear that there's not any doses going wasted and unused in Eldorado County. That's, that's great news, so.
I'll add one more thing, which is there's a, there's a phone app called Be Safe, which is a system that is designed to collect information from people about any possible side effects they have or anything like that, so they can track that well. But, and I haven't gotten vaccinated yet, because it's not my turn, but I will as soon as I can. And people I know who've done this, they've gotten a reminder when the, when there are either three or four weeks, depending on which manufacturer's vaccine they've used, is coming up, so that there'll be, there should be two prompts. One, one is that we'll have people in the records, and two is this Be Safe program might send a prompt as well.
Great. Any further questions? All right, this was brought up at the last minute as a, just a quick, well, brief presentation to the public, so because of last-minute information, and to give a quick update on our process, so thank you so much, Dr. Williams, and and Carla Haas for taking your evening out to kind of update us on, on the current situation as of today. That was much appreciated.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, if you could, just a reminder, I realize this wasn't an agendaized item, but you may want to ask if there's any questions from the public. Carl, if you could stay on just for a minute, see, I don't think there's a lot to plan for it. Sorry about that.
All right. Regina, if we could take comments from the public right now, thank you. Cleve.
Certainly. Public comment is not open regarding the COVID-19 update from the county. If you're joining by phone, you can press the star nine option to indicate your desire to speak, and then I'll call on you using the last three digits of your phone number, and if you're joining by computer, there is a raise hand option at the bottom of your screen, and everybody will have three minutes to speak. I'm not seeing any comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Regina. Well, that was, that was pretty easy, so. Again, thank you, Dr. Williams and Carla for coming in tonight. And all right, and we'll go ahead and move on to item 6.1, application period open for city commissions, and that is Ms. O'Connell. How about maybe unmute? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, I wanted to mention that we will be opening up the application period for the several committees and commissions tomorrow. The application period will end on February 12th, Friday, February 12th, but just real quick, I wanted to just mention which commissions and committees have open or will have open seats come March. We have two on the Measures H and L Sales Tax Committee. There will be four seats on the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. There will be two on the Planning Commission, and three seats on the Recreation and Parks Commission. So those applications will be posted on the website along with information about each committee and commission to include some membership requirements as well, so. Just wanted to share that information, so we'll, we'll get everything up on the website tomorrow, so.
All right, it looks like Patty may have a question.
I wanted to ask Regina a question. Regina, so these are, these are open seats. There's, nobody from the committee is returning to fill those?
These are, these are open seats. The terms are expiring, so these are two-year terms.
Have you gotten any word whether they, anybody is, you know, going to refile for that?
I haven't. I will notify the, the current incumbents to let them know, and they will have an opportunity to, to reapply.
All right, these are not vacated seats. These are seats that are coming up and open for.
That is correct. Several of them are terms that are going to be expiring this March. There are a couple that are currently unfilled or will be vacated that are unexpired, which will still, that the term will be ending in 2023, so. So these are two-year terms, and then some of them are, are unexpired, so that will all be detailed.
Could you repeat where that's going to be found, please?
That will be under the, let's see, I'm trying to remember where we posted it before. It will be on the front page of the website as news, I guess, and then it'll also be, will probably post it under the, there is a tab for each of the commissions, so you'd go to city council, I believe, or government, I'm trying to remember where it's at.
City council and then commissions.
Okay, yeah, so there's an actual.
And the simple answer is it's on the front page?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you so much. And for those people who are considering applying for committees, it is, I've been on, I've done my fair share of participation with the city, and it is, it is rewarding, it is challenging. You get to know the city better. It's a great place to start if you're thinking about city council or something else like that, to get your foot in the door and see what's going on, so I encourage, if you're interested in the city, and, and, you know, with, from time to time, we've had people offer to volunteer here and there. These are great places to give back and find ways to help out the city, and it's, and it's much needed. These, these committees make some important decisions and help guide the council on how to move a lot of situations forward, situations forward that ultimately end up here at the city council for decisions, so. So I look forward to seeing, seeing people, seeing people apply, so thank you, Regina. All right, moving on to brief comments from the city council. Let's go ahead and start with Patty.
Well, I don't have too many comments, except it's a new year, and I hope a new beginning and a happy new year for everybody. I haven't, you know, we were kind of, didn't have a lot of meetings during the holiday season, so we're all rested and ready to go. Take on all those, those assignments that you're telling us that you've got, you're thinking about, Dennis.
All right, I'm ready to hit the ground running.
Real quick, real quick, I also want to ditto what you told Michael. I know when we were able to meet, after every meeting, I, we'd kind of go out the door together, and I'd say, can you believe this? And he'd say, no. That he had one, I mean, one new issue came up that he had to handle, and he just did a magnificent job, so I just wanted to tell him that.
Much appreciated. Councilmember No. Council, yes.
I just heard that we got our date for Rise and Shine this year. There's no information out yet, but mark your calendars for Saturday, May 1st. As long as COVID allows, we're going to have our workday this year in the city, and that's a really great time to meet your neighbors and friends and help spruce up.
And that's a really great time to meet your neighbors and friends and help spruce up the city. So excited about that.
All right. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Taylor.
Um, well, I'd like to thank you for your comments and echo what Patty said. For council member Sarah Goza, yeah, it was, it was a wild year for, for you as mayor with just so much thrown at you and you did a really great job. And then I just want to, you know, touch on a couple of the current events. You know, like so many Americans, I, I was really saddened by the events that happened in the Capitol. And it's looking like, I had a really good conversation with Chief Wren today just about kind of everything that's going on. And, you know, I think everyone should just kind of, I just really want to encourage everyone to hunker down for the next couple of weeks and go for some hikes with their family and avoid protests and demonstrations, whether they're local or in Sacramento. I don't want to be alarmist, but I am concerned about the safety of all of our residents. And this, this is just a good time to do some outdoor activities with your family and to take it easy. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Sarah Goza.
All right, I couldn't find my own mute button. Thank you. And thank you all for the kind words. If you'll indulge me next week or next council meeting, I'll have maybe a couple of more things I wanted to say. But it has been a great honor to, to serve, even if it was not the year I would have expected when we, you know, when, when we started in 2020. And again, just wanted to thank all the staff for all the work they've done and to keep the city moving the way it has. It's really unprecedented and, and really for our community as a whole, where, you know, I have an office in Sacramento and you go down there and it looks like a ghost town. And, you know, we're, we're still thriving here in Plasterville. So it says a lot for everybody, for people supporting ourselves locally. It's not just tourists. We all know this is a working town and everybody's chipped in to be able to do that. The only thing I would say is same as councilmember Taylor or Vice Mayor Taylor said, you know, the, the events really were horrific in, in Washington DC. To see the seat of government be sort of ransacked the way that it was is not what makes us Americans. And it was just, you know, it was a horrible sight. And it'll be a day that's a dark day in our history, you know, when we're all long gone, where people are reading history books that we had that type of protest and destruction in our nation's capital. And I do hope that as we move forward, whether, where you, no matter where you were on the issue, that we come together as Americans. And that, you know, there's elections that people win, there's elections that people lose. I've certainly been on both sides of those things many times. And it's tort, you know, you feel terrible when you lose. But the great thing is that we have the ability to have these elections in our country because we are a free country and that we have a chance in two years or four years or six years to, you know, see if our side can win an election again. And, and I do hope that everybody takes that to heart as we move forward. This isn't about because someone's an enemy that, or someone that's an enemy because we have a different political view. It's that we have a different political view. But that we all want to have what's best for our country. So I thank, thank you for a couple of minutes here.
That is, boy, those are great comments by, by both you, Councilmember Sarah Goza and Taylor. I, and I would echo those as well. One of the nice things about this community is that we are, at least at the city council level, level, we are apolitical and we all are here to serve as, as, to serve our community. And, and it's, and that to me, there's times where I, when coming into this position, I did, I literally did not know what everybody's political views were. And, and I really liked that. And there's still people that I like. I don't care what your political views are. We're all, we're all rowing together here to bring this town together. And so I appreciate that about how we, how we have moved forward through a lot of this. And while some of our political views creep in, which is, which is normal and appropriate, ultimately, we end up supporting this community. And I know everybody's hearts in it and all the way up and down the city. And so I do appreciate that. I, on another note, Cleve and I have been working to put together a, a process to, to do some of those things that I was talking about in terms of formalizing a process for looking at our, our, our objectives for the city, our goals. And we'll be coming forward more with that. We're in the early stages. So I don't have a lot to talk about yet, but we're certainly having conversations and looking for opportunities to bring that forward. So I just want to let you know that we've, we definitely are thinking about that and wanting to move forward in a way. With that, we'll close brief comments by the city council. Move on to. Yes.
Could I mention, you do have one attendee with their hand raised. I don't know if that was on either of the, the six point items. Don't know if that's regarding that or not. They don't know. Oh, the hand has now gone down. So maybe.
Maybe they're preparing for public comment.
So, so they can, they can speak in our public comments. Yes. So, all right. Thank you.
Oh, no, you saw my hand. Okay. All right. So moving on to public comments on, on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on any item listed on the agenda except by special action by a city council under specific circumstances. I reserve the, the right to limit the speaker's limit to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So from that, Mr. Morris, do you have any written communication?
Mr. Mayor, let's, sorry, Cleve.
Go ahead. We do have one written, written item for communication from Nicole Gottberg that you have all received. Nothing really on that unless you want to take any action on that.
All right. Thank you. Regina?
No, go ahead. Cleve said it. Sorry.
All right. Thank you so much. I tossed it to the wrong person. Okay, let's go ahead and open up for oral communications for the, to the council. Regina, please.
Public comment is now on for item 7.2. We'll start with caller 525. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Leo Bennett Koshon. Listened in while doing chores while you had your long meeting yesterday. So hats off to all of you. You don't get to do chores while you're serving the public. So it's appreciated. I'm glad that you will be considering the motion or proclamation concerning racism, discrimination and hate. But that to me is a stance against something. And I would urge you to give direction to staff to stand for something. In my mind, the alternatives are justice, inclusion and peace. And I appreciate the comments I heard from the various members about the stress our entire country is under and what's occurring like in Salem, Oregon, and some of our other counties. And like was mentioned, Sacramento. Hopefully, we will be able to not have that kind of stress. But we've had touches of it and this is really going to be one intense form between now and the inauguration. Those of us that monitor social media know that there's some very hurting people in this community, that Martin Luther King Jr. Day is very, very important, that they at least stand for peace, for justice and inclusion. And they will most likely be at the courthouse steps. And I applaud what I heard, that our law enforcement is going to ensure their free speech. And I hope those that have showed up in the past are true to what they've been saying on social media, is that they don't want to go there anymore and it's a nice quiet vigil. Lastly, Martin Luther King Jr. Day has evolved into a day of service. And I'd ask the council to perhaps under future agenda items, consider directing staff to figure out, there's lots of models online, but I think some cities are having 40 days of service. And it was already mentioned, that's something that we need. And I think doing it in the season of trying to kill would be great. What pops into my mind as I walk the Eldorado Trail is there's plenty of trash to be picked up on the side. Thanks for your time. Bye now.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, Cleve, I'm just trying to figure this out now. Aaron, Aaron got to do this last night. So now I'm trying to figure this out. Give me just one moment, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to figure out how to get back to my attendees list. Okay, Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to make a comment really quickly about our previous mayor Sarah Goza and thank him also for, for his service. Thank you so much. It was a difficult year. And I want to tell you, the moment that I was proudest that you were our mayor was when I saw a clip of you for an interview where you said, and this was towards the end of the year, you said, I'm a man of color and this city is not about hate and hate will not be tolerated. And I, I just, I was so proud. I was so proud that you said that so strongly. So thank you. The other reason I called was to just talk for a moment about yesterday and what a varied day it was. I started out by listening to the Good Governance training that the county had for its Board of Supervisors and for its Department Directors. It was really an excellent training and online. The presentation is available for downloading, as is their Effective Governance in Eldorado County Handbook, which is excellent. So I learned a lot listening to that. And then later that day were the two appeals that we had that you, that you handled. And I'm going to say this gently, but I, I would hope that that whole process, not the outcome, I don't want to discuss the outcome. The process that occurred yesterday could be reviewed under the umbrella of was that good governance? Or was that not good governance? I really liked what our new mayor, Mayor Thomas was saying about some, looking at process. And we have this new year ahead. And I think that we can improve on our process. And I think we can show a greater level of respect to all. And I think we can really take away the personal comments that are made in these procedures. So that's really all I have. And I look forward to this new year, this new board, and hopefully some fresh starts and some good things happening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Okay, Sue Rodman, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now? Am I on? Please let me.
You are on. You are on. Sue, we have you on. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
My comments are on. Fire season is officially over. So now is the opportune time to get serious about hazardous vegetation removal. Please, let's clean up our beloved hometown. If you need to know what needs to be done, contact the city. We have an enforcement officer who can tell you what you need to do to be in compliance with the city's ordinance. And I believe the ordinance is on the website. Also, Eldorado Fire has a checklist to use and they can come to your property and let you know if your efforts are sufficient to protect your home and family or what else needs to be done. They did this for me and it was very informative and helpful. Now is the time to take care of our home properties, to protect ourselves and our neighbors. If you have neighbors who are ignoring our vegetation ordinance, call the city enforcement officer. Your very life may depend on enforcement of that city code. Remember Paradise? This is it. Fire season will be back before you know it. Plasterville City Council, now is the time to contact those large property owners like Lundstrom Ranch that need to reduce their hazardous fuel loads. They need to be put on notice to either clean up or pay the bill for the city to contract further work. A vegetation enforcement ordinance, a vegetation ordinance without enforcement is not effective. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much, Sue.
Jen C., go ahead.
Hi there. It's Jennifer from Clay Street. And I guess the first thing is I was trying to get an update on, on the decision about the Clay Street project and whether you will be doing an EIS in addition to an EIR. I've asked Caltrans, I've asked Rebecca, I asked Regina to ask Rebecca. I noticed that you had something about your, about extending the EIR on the future agenda items. And I, it would be great if you could just comment on that because of course it's been a while. And of course, a previous agenda item did anticipate a possible EIS. And it's just, it's similar to an EIR, but there are a few differences. I, I don't understand why the written communication I sent in wasn't acknowledged as written communication. I was just reminding the council, Dennis, I think, had received the original communication of a petition from 2018. I believe that one was about 75 members or neighbor, neighbors from Clay Street and, you know, and some of the offshoot streets just petitioning for some form of speed hump, speed tables, I think it, I think was how Sacramento area was phrasing it. But anyway, there is a strong consensus that we have a problem. And the reason that it's a problem is because there's so many curves on Clay Street, blind spots and curves. And I mean, there's traffic volume and there's also speeding and both are a problem. And I, and I, we sent in written communication to remind you of that, of that earlier petition. Of course, then Tammy Dans, who I think will be speaking later, also did another petition about some other traffic calming measures this past September, September 2020. So it's just an ongoing issue. And it does tie into the Clay Street Bridge Project because of course that bridge, aside from its historic value, is a traffic calming feature. And it's going to radically change this neighborhood if that bridge gets wider and that street gets turned into a minor arterial by connecting it with Cedar Ravine. So, you know, you know, we, we would just really appreciate, this has been ongoing, the, the process with that project. So we'd really appreciate some more updates at these, at these regular city council meetings. And other than that, last night, I'll just say, you know, it, I, I guess the main thing is how this, the, the therapy store is just the, the fact that it became a discussion about American, what is American and, and competition and free competition is American. And I just want to say, you know, the more we look at this historic district, we are looking at the role of the gold rush, the role of the state of California, the role of the gold itself in, in the Civil War. And what is America is the, the fact of this 31st state that had the question, is this going to be a free state or a slave state? And it was a free state. And this is an incredible moment in American history. And part of it is right here in downtown Plasterville in our historic district. So please, please start looking at protecting this historic district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Nicole Gottberg, go ahead.
Nicole, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
I'm happy to be able to speak to you all. First, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Thomas and Vice Mayor Taylor. I think you're both excellent leaders and I'm glad to see you in those roles. I just had a couple of additional comments that I wanted to make to those that I had provided in my letter now that I have the agenda. The first is that I did not see an item to set a date for having a discussion regarding removing the news from the city logo and signs on tonight's agenda, including under upcoming items. During the July 14th, 2020 city council meeting, a motion was made that was passed that the item would be brought back in January to set a date for further discussion. I would also note that there was a previous motion made during that meeting to delay the item indefinitely due to the uncertainties around COVID. And that item failed due to lack of a second. I think the issue of a news being displayed on government property is important to many of the residents of Plasterville. And discussion of this issue should not. And discussion of this issue should not be delayed indefinitely. And then my second comment was that during the December 8, 2020, city council meeting, council member Taylor had requested that a proclamation to denounce racism, hate, and extremism be added to the upcoming meeting items. I think this proclamation is important. I was disappointed it was not part of tonight's meeting, but I do see, under the upcoming agenda items scheduled for the next city council meeting, there is a proclamation condemning racism, discrimination, and hatred. I do think that language is important, and in light of what we have seen locally and nationally, the proclamation should explicitly denounce extremism. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Now taking public comment from Anderson.
Hi, this is Adam Anderson. I'm a business owner on Main Street and property owner on Main Street. I also serve on the Placerville Economic Advisory Council, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. And I was very concerned about how the Placerville Downtown Association has held themselves out at that meeting last night. I'm concerned that they don't represent Main Street merchants. And although they represent themselves as doing that, I just want to make sure that you knew that I was never asked to be part of this new group. I was before as part of an area and have served for many years on the, as a member of the PDA and on their board. So, I've worked on their budget, and I've worked at their fundraising. And so, it is important to me. But what it's become is very concerning to me. It seems like at this point, it's a a political action committee run by a handful of people that are holding themselves out as the voice of Main Street. And I just want to say that that's a false narrative of theirs. So, I understand that they're spending the money of the PDA to fight businesses coming in like therapy. And the attorney that they had last night was supposedly paid for by PDA money, which is concerning to me that they're using this money that was designated for the promotion of Main Street and businesses to fight against businesses that want to come to Main Street. Whether you like that or not, I don't think that's the purpose of the funds to be used that way. And I'd like to ask the council to consider having an agenda item in the future to audit their, to audit the organization, to see if they're living by their bylaws, and that they should not be recognized until that has been verified that they're adhering to their bylaws. So, if you could consider that, I would appreciate that, and thank you for your time. And I'd like to also congratulate Mayor Thomas and the Vice Mayor, and also thank Mayor Sarah Gose for his service. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Ed Ingram, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Very good. Sorry. Thank you. Just congratulations to Mayor Thomas, the new vice president, and thanking council member Sarah Gose for all his efforts in 2020. He did a great job. Also, just some kudos for the mosquito road progress, for your engineering staff and beer camp, but working expediently, trying to get started on getting some repairs going permanently, hopefully by summer. And kudos for the Franklin Clay Street guardrail progress and repairs. Very appreciated. Looking forward to be completed. And also interested in your next meetings, where the Clay Street progress of the traffic calming measures. And just a little awareness, where the city, that the Clay Street deterioration of its asphalt is starting to become very visible and noticeable, big areas, alligatoring out and depressions, and might want to take a look in that for the traffic calming measures and the upcoming new progress on the four and six housing. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Okay, we'll take public comment from Kirk Smith. Go ahead.
Hello, Kirk.
Good evening, Mayor. I wanted to pursue a positive subject that Cleo had, Leo had raised earlier. I hope he doesn't mind just to share some of the discussions we've had for the last six months. But we talked about the need to have some public workshops on two things. One is on prejudice, and the other one's on the history of the town, specifically the nickname Hangtown. You know, when you use the word racist and racism, it always provokes strong responses. People don't like it. They don't recognize when it's around them. So, we think workshops like that with some facilitators would help people to recognize and be sensitive to those matters. And secondly, to have historians, not us amateurs, but real historians come in and discuss the history of that name. If you broach it now, the feelings are so strong, it's going to be nothing but divisive. So, I hope, Mayor, you could be supportive of that, along with Vice Mayor Taylor, because I've raised it before with Mayor Sarah Gose. And it would be helpful to have support rather than someone come in and try to do something unilaterally, change the seal or things like that, that's going to cause anger. Prejudice is something we all have. But my concerns shifted when I heard the last speaker, because you started off saying there'd be no personal attacks, and that's exactly what we got. You're going after people individually, and you're describing a private group. I remember last year when Mark Acuna asked to give a second bite of the apple to two speakers, merchants on Main Street, to repeat what they'd said earlier, which is that the current officers were self-selected. They were selected by the directors. But that's exactly, as you know, what the bylaws provide. The bylaws are on the website. You can see it. And isn't that ironic, coming from from Mark Acuna, before a good guy like Mike Sarah Gose, when they were both on the council, pursuant to rules that said it can be selected by the council and not go up to a vote? There's no difference. So, let's keep those kind of attacks away. That irritates me. And I think we ought to get back to trying to heal when there's been so much incredible divisiveness throughout the year. And lastly, thank you, Regina and Cle, for putting up this timer on the side. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Okay, Mandy Rodriguez, it's your turn.
Good morning, or good morning, good evening, everybody. Um, I do like this timer, but maybe it's just because I'm on my phone. I can't see anybody's face. So, I like to see all your beautiful faces. And I would like to third Leo's comment on, you know, words mean things. And when we say, you know, hate, and these things, they're negative words. And I myself have been completely attacked over the last month. So, I know what hate feels like. I know what bullying and harassment, I know what being marginalized feels like. I know what it feels like to not feel comfortable walking down the street. And unfortunately, the board has allowed personal attacks to happen to me during city council meetings. So, it seems like, you know, when people attack you guys, you cut them off. But when they attack other people, it's allowed to continue. So, I'd like to move on and bring some unity between the city council and the community, and also between the community itself. When, at the last meeting, there were Proud Boys outside, and they were progressives outside. And they actually had dialogue with each other while you guys were inside. And you missed a great opportunity to bring them in and actually have a conversation. So, moving in to 2021, I asked, instead of proclamations, let's take action. Let's bring unity. And that only way we can have unity is if we start with person-to-person dialogue, open forums, and finding common ground. And I really think that that's where we need to be right now. The last month has been an unbelievable, painful thing for me. And it was unfair, and it was, I feel irresponsible by many people. I was liable by many people. And I never, I never felt like I got my voice, and I was never able to defend myself. And I wouldn't wish this feeling on my worst enemy. We need to bring unity to this town, and I'm looking at you, all of you, to lead. And you may not like my opinion, you may not like others' opinion, but everybody gets a seat at the table, and it's time to come together. And I'm asking you, as a city council, please bring, bring a forum. We need to have an in-person forum and start talking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mandy. Appreciate them.
Tammy Danz, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I've got two items that I want to talk about. One is the solar radar that is at the corner of Clay Street and Franklin. It's been inoperable for probably about three weeks. Would love to see that back up there. It just, you know, whatever helps with the traffic calming is needed, you know? And it's, like I said, it's been down, broke, what have, what have you. Secondly, the mosquito bustation, the vandalism down there is continuous. I think it needs to be better monitored by the city and by PD. Sunday, the janitor was locked in the females bathroom. That lock has been broken for approximately three weeks. She could not get out. Luckily, she had a key, and she was able to open one of the panel doors to get into the glass, you know, the little glass window that you can see and was pounding. And by chance, I just happened to hear her, and of course, went down very cautiously, because you never know who's in there. And the poor woman had been stuck in there for half an hour, couldn't get out, didn't have a phone. And I was able to get her out through the broken handle that's on the door. So, would just like, you know, some, maybe some updating, you know, something needs to be done, because that could have been a rule safety issue. If that had been at night, and I have seen the janitors come in the evening, and what if she'd been locked in there all night without a phone? That would not have been very, the outcome might not have been very good. Anyways, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right, last call for item 7.2, public comments regarding items that are not on the agenda. I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that. Regina, moving on to item eight and 8.1 through 8.8. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any matter of the council, which any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion.
I'll move.
We have a second. Okay, we got a first and a second. Let's go ahead. Regina, let's go ahead and open this up for public. How about discussion first? Do you have something there, Jackie? I can't see your-
Sorry, muted. Yeah, I just had a question on the minutes. I brought it up with Cleve earlier. I don't know if wanting to, I didn't have a chance to follow up with you regarding 12.3 and the adoption of the Resolution approving Cannabis Community Benefits Program for the city of Placerville. And I thought that we had just clarified during that conversation that the projects were for in the city of Placerville. I thought it was implied, and it got brought up, and I thought we clarified it, but I didn't see this reflected. Cleve, you were gonna have Regina look that up.
Yeah, unfortunately, Councilor, we have not had a chance to go back and review the video from the meeting. So, the council has two choices. You could pull this and save it for your next meeting, when we'll have a chance to look into that. Or if council remembers and wants to clarify that that was indeed to be in there, we can add that to the minutes. So, I'll leave that to the council, whichever way you want to do that.
I'll leave it open to any discussion here.
Yeah, I mean, my recollection is that we did make that, that the money was to be spent in the city, you know, all, if all possible, because I know there might be something like a Boys and Girls Club that might spill out a little bit, but that we really wanted to have those funds used in city limits.
Right.
The term we used was substantial.
At least so.
Thank you. We can then, if you want to adopt that one with that amendment, we will make that amendment to the minute.
All right.
So moved. I'll add that to my-
And I'll second.
And Borelli, all right. All right, let's go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Okay, public comment is now open for the consent calendar. We'll start with caller 857. Go ahead.
Hello, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Michael, we can hear you.
Hey, so I tried to ring in when you said last call for public comment, and you moved on way too quickly. There is about a 20-something second delay between the video and the phone. I'm on the phone. So, you need to stall a little bit, because I had a few things I'd like to address for public comment, and I'll just scrap my consent calendar comments, if that's okay.
Michael, I'd be happy to acknowledge you here.
Thank you. I would like the city to look into if they can change conditional use permits to run with the business instead of the land. I think that's more appropriate, because we all know how CUPs work. There are specific permission for specific businesses. I think appropriate if they could run with the business. I'm thrilled about supporting Measure L and finally seeing my road getting worked on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I need clarification if the homeowners on that road that's being rebuilt right now will be able to go directly to the hospital if need be and not take a five-time longer trip to the east out Union Ridge, like somebody walking down the street told us. The city needs to immediately address the problem of the Taco Bell, Broadway Taco Bell and Starbucks drive-throughs backing out onto Broadway and stopping eastbound Broadway traffic. There's that Little Island kidney. I don't know if that can be taken out or what can be done, but it's getting to be a serious problem. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And for clarification, when it comes to public comment, especially during oral communication, item seven, it is not a Q and A opportunity. It really is the opportunity for the council to just listen to what you have to say. And I would encourage you to, to contact staff with questions and issues that you have. If there's something eminently, you know, important that we address immediately, we may consider that. However, for the, for the most case, we are eager and happy to hear from you, and I have taken copious notes. And we'll be addressing a few things with staff along the way. And so, we look forward to, I look forward to having those conversations with staff. And by the way, you can reach staff on there by email, and you could try and reach them by phone. But usually, email is the best way, and they would be, and they have indicated to me, they're happy to respond to all these questions that have been posed along the way. So, I would encourage you to reach out to staff and go ahead and address those there. Because by virtue of our process here, we just cannot address those here at the city council. And so, moving back to our consent calendar, we have closed public comment. Bring it back for roll call vote, please, or any further discussion. All right, let's bring it to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarah Gose. Vice Mayor Thomas, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Taylor.
You're muted, Care.
Hi.
You're Thomas.
Yes. Yes. Uh, I, thank you. We'll give you two meetings to get it figured out, doesn't that? Yeah, you got, you got a great spirit here. I can't get it straight either, so I guess we're all in the same boat. Um, all right, moving on to item number, flip the page. Let's see, we have no items for public consent calendar. Uh, I mean, no items pulled. Uh, we have no ordinances and no public hearings. So we're gonna move on to item twelve, discussion and action items. And item twelve point one, adopt a resolution approving amendments to the water supply agreement. With El Dorado Irrigation District, right?
No.
I have the wrong, oh, I, I have the wrong agenda sitting in front of me. That was weird. I've got two hundred pieces of paper here. All right, knew that didn't look right. Item twelve point one. My first good goof up for the night. Adopt a resolution creating position of community utility liaison and appoint Mark position. And this is for Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as you know, over the past three years, former council member, former mayor and council member Mark Acuna has been a great assistance to staff and to the city in monitoring, making recommendations and, and providing kind of analysis of public safety power shut offs that have occurred in the city. Um, we, uh, I, I will say personally, I have been in the room with Mark several times in uh meetings with PG&E and others uh to discuss what is happening and how we can do better and how we can encourage PG&E to do that, to better, to do better. Um, and as, as Mark prepared to leave office, uh, him and I had several discussions about the possibility of him continuing to um assist us. And as we discussed that towards the end, I, I liked the idea and I thought it would have some value to it and felt that um in order to make it work right, it would be good to cut, have it be an official position approved by the city council. So that Mark can on occasion, when the need be, he can actually speak, speak for the city. Now, I want to emphasize the way I have this designed is that he would, he would work with me and report to me. And as far as speaking for the city, it would not be anything that would not be approved by me um as we go forward. Um, but I think there is still a, a lot of value that can be realized from using Mark's skills and knowledge of PG&E's system to benefit the community going forward. In fact, in our latest meeting we had with PG&E, uh, I think Mayor, former Mayor Saragosa, I should say, Councilmember Saragosa can attest that uh he brought up some ideas within one of the new representatives that we met with with PG&E and committed to meet with them to talk about how switching can be done to keep more of Placerville um energized during these PSBS events. So I think there is some real value there and, and I, I think it can, can work well. Um, again, I, I emphasize that I've listed kind of the duties that I see that he would be involved with. He'll work directly with me and, uh, under the direction of me if I have things that I need him to do and that he can work on. Um, I discussed this and approved this with Mark and he is on board with it. Um, so I prepare a resolution here for you to adopt, to make that. Um, and I am happy to make any changes or additions, deletions from that that you feel might be appropriate. But at this time, I'm asking for your approval to appoint Mark as the city's community utility liaison uh this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Does, uh, do we have any questions for staff? At this time. All right, see, none. Let's go ahead and open this up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point one, the community utility liaison. Uh, we'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Okay, I think Mark Acuna is the best possible person I know to take this one on. Mark has been functioning as our liaison with PG&E already and doing as good a job as anyone could possibly do. I hope Mark is ready to volunteer for this one, so I definitely think this is a great idea. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Sue.
Caller eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I agree that Mark is the man for the job. Um, I wouldn't even be opposed to some compensation, even if it's just a cellphone reimbursement, um, something like that. He, his special skills necessitate that this is for him. Um, the only question I have is, would any of the information going back and forth be public access documents? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Mandy Rodriguez, go ahead.
Um, yes, uh, you know, I actually think Mark Acuna would be great for this position. He obviously knows the power PG&E game uh better than probably anybody. But um my concerns are the slander that he, liable slander that he um uh said against myself.
With the brakes on this, Mandy, and let's go ahead and bring it back to just.
I got my two minutes.
No, your two minutes includes not, not. Thank you, Regina.
Okay, last call for item twelve point one. Kirk Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kirk. Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess I'm on the other side again. Uh, Mark Acuna is very bright, charming, and he's certainly had a long period of time to contribute to the city. And he knows PG&E. But I think the public has an, should have an opportunity to learn more besides their, these things are presented to us. You have only three days' notice, so there's not a chance to really inquire and get a lot of information. It took one month ago when I filed a request for documents related to last night's hearing. Didn't get them, takes time. But last night, even then, we found out that there was brand-new information none of the other parties knew about. So I don't really have enough time to find out information like, uh, what would the impact be uh of bankruptcy for this business on Mark's retirement? And let's assume they're all very good answers. We don't have a chance to know that. When there was bankruptcy proceedings years ago, uh, employment, retirement was wiped out. So during this discussion last year, uh, that was raised as an option. They were in bankruptcy and frankly, they could be in bankruptcy again because the negligence that caused the fire is the same negligence that caused massive destruction to the people in the business community when their freezers were shut off and things like that. But that's not going to be presented by somebody who is in a position where their retirement is lost. We can't ask those questions even informally because you just didn't give us enough time. And it's not like it was necessary. We're not going to have any power outages, are we? In the next several months during the winter season? So that's my concern. Um, you know, for years, I've heard several council members at various times talk about the problems with the Records Request Act, how it can be burdensome. But it exists for very positive reasons, so the public can be informed and be able to participate in these things. It is so important, it's actually inscribed in our state constitution. It's just not possible to get the background information. So it might be the perfect choice, but there's a lot of questions to ask. We can't ask them and we're certainly not going to find out about them tonight, let alone have a chance to verify them.
All right, thank you, Kirk.
We will take last call on item twelve point one, the community utility liaison.
We'll give the appropriate twenty seconds delay here, or there's something, something close to that. Do we have any background music for this time?
Let's go ahead and start with Jen C.
Okay, there we go. We've got another one. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I just want to emphasize that it's community utility liaison, which is a lot more than PG&E. And I really think, um, you know, sort of fleshing out what that means is, is, is important. Um, you know, all these propane systems, you know, and just kind of how they work. There's, you know, a lot of, um, you know, there's some subdivisions and things that have sort of special relationships on the propane side. Uh, obviously, we don't have gas lines coming up here. Um, it, there's, there's just other entities besides PG&E involved. And I just, I, I guess the first thing I want to say is I feel like you should really flesh out this job description of what the liaison is. And I guess I'm thinking, you know, I am thinking also about all the issues associated with, you know, renewables and, you know, solar and, um, solar in particular and whatever, whatever that, um, city might be doing or thinking with, you know, kind of developing in that arena. But I guess I just, I just feel like, I, and, and we want, you know, I mean, we totally appreciate, you know, that Mark is ready, willing and able to serve and to continue. I'm, we're assuming he does, uh, you know, accept this uh appointment. But um I, I just feel like the, the job position that, of this liaison needs to be thought through and articulated a little bit better. And possibly, I mean, you know, just for the sake of process, just, you know, asking if there's anybody else that's interested. So those are my comments. Thanks.
All right. Uh, thank you, Jennifer.
There are no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, thank you very much and let's go ahead and bring it back for discussion. Yeah, Care.
Um, well, I'd just like to say that, you know, Mark's, the expertise that Mark brought to the city um was just really vital um as we navigated the power outages and all of the issues that we had with PG&E. Um, I wholeheartedly support this. And then I just wanted to, to clarify and, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but um this, this does not go into propane utilities or water utilities. This is strictly PG&E and the Pioneer Community Energy Program. Um, and there is a structure in place for the Pioneer Energy Program um where we will have representation on their board as a city. Um, and Mark will not be making those decisions um unilaterally on behalf of the city.
That's correct. If you look in the staff report, I've listed what the, the duties and responsibilities will be. Um, and so I, I, I think that, that that's pretty well defined. That it's primarily to the PSBS and as you mentioned, uh, other, potentially other PG&E issues. But then, uh, if there are issues that come up regarding Pioneer Community Energy, he could also assist with that, so.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Saragosa.
Uh, yeah, I just want to say, I, I, you know, I have a chance to work with Mark uh the past two years on PG&E items as Vice Mayor and then as Mayor and with Mark filling in on the PG&E front. And I can tell you for the citizens of Placerville and really for El Dorado County, uh, you know, Mark's knowledge, I mean, down to the fact that he knows the switch numbers of, of, uh, you know, uh, switches around town and, and the distribution lines, his ability to talk at that level and at that detail to PG&E officials, not just at the time Brandon, but at the higher levels and Mike Weds of the world and people like that. It, it really was a difference maker. And I can tell you, I mean, we could open this process up and nobody's going to have fourteen years as a city council member that has worked for PG&E uh and, and understands the topography in the area that, that we live in uh to the degree and even the meteorological uh background that, that Mark's taken on as well. So I have absolutely zero concerns uh that uh he would not be the absolute right guy for this. It was made for him and that's why we, we talked about this in the past. And uh he's, I have no doubt, he saved us a, a few days of, of blackouts that would otherwise have, have happened throughout our city and maybe into the county as well just by pushing back and being able to give those numbers that, quite frankly, the rest of us just didn't have that information in that, in that uh level of detail. So I'm happy to, to support this. Um, and I'll make a motion to um approve this uh resolution um for community utility liaison and appoint uh Mr. Acuna to that position.
I'll second that.
All right, and Patty, did you have any further comments?
Pretty much along the same lines as Michael just said, so I'll, I'll just say ditto. This is just, this is just a no-brainer. I mean, we, Mark has shown, as Michael said, for the last two or three years what he's capable of. And I don't think anyone else would want this position. And he's, you know, and it's a kind of a double whammy. He, we have the experience with him being on the council, like you say, fourteen years. He knows how to work with government, you know, and, and also with PG&E, and that's a real plus. I don't think there's any other person could have, has, has those qualifications. So anyway, I'm, yeah, okay.
I would, I would definitely say, say he's stepped out of the frying pan and I don't want to say into the fire, but uh he has hopefully prevented that from happening. Uh, I, I, you know, I think the proof is in the pudding and, and Mark, Mark has been, um, Mark has been serving this community for many, many years. He has been voted in, he has been vetted, he has been tried and he has been proven to show that he, he serves this community with, with a heart aimed towards it. And, and his experience and his uh, uh, knowledge that he, that he has brought to the table has been, the whole community has benefited in a variety of ways from, from having our, uh, from having generations, generation plant put up in, up in the switch stations. Uh, what is that called? The, uh, uh, the switch up there on Broadway to making sure that some of our businesses are open for use and all the way to, you know, really working with them to make sure that we just don't get shut off for no good reason because we happen to be in the same grid as, as Paradise, you know, a hundred miles north of us. So he has, he has served the city it with, with the, in, in such great ways and, and, and everybody uh has benefited from his, from his support and his participation there. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with everybody. Um, Jackie?
Yeah, I just, I want to acknowledge that, you know, it's really a unique situation in the last couple of years that we have with the power outages. You know, in the last hundred years, this is not a typical issue and that we're so lucky to have this opportunity to have someone who is able to deal with this. You know, we're, most cities don't have this position. It's not a position that, you know, i- is typical. And we're just, you know, incredibly lucky that we have someone who's going to volunteer with so much experience to help carry and do what he's been doing, you know? It's not even like, I mean, he's going to continue doing what he was doing. We're not making up new stuff. We're lucky to have him take some of our workload, frankly.
All right, with that, see no further comments. I'll go ahead and, can we get a roll call, Regina?
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor. Mayor Thomas.
I. All right, unanimous. Thank you, Mark, for stepping up if you're out there somewhere and on the, watching this here. Let's go ahead and move on to item twelve point two, authorizing staff to release an RFP, soliciting qualified entities to perform a needed assessment study for the combined police fire facility. Chief Red.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Vice Mayor Taylor, Council, staff and of course our wonderful community. Uh, what's before you is a request to release an RFP to a qualified entity to conduct a needs assessment study for current needs and future needs. Uh, I'm not only the Placerville Police Department, but uh as well as our, our partners in the Fire Department. In twenty nineteen, I met with the uh command staff and Chief Cordero and we discussed having a joint public safety building. Uh, the driving force behind that was, you know, we believe that our, our dollar would go a little bit farther being able to share um certain administrative uh resources if the entities were contained, contained within a public safety type facility. Um, in two thousands, uh, the city actually began uh a needs assessment study. And again, twenty fourteen, I believe, uh, that needs assessment study was updated. Should come no, is no surprise to anybody that's been to the police department that, um, you know, is built in the seventies. We outgrew it probably in the eighties. Uh, there's pretty significant uh efficiency. Um, some safety concerns, although we try to mitigate those the best we can. Uh, but we're just stacking things on top of a, of a structure of a facility that was never designed for modern use. Um, so this, this RFP would be uh pushed out. The city uh set aside back in February of twenty twenty, fifteen thousand dollars in the Fire District did matching funds uh for a combined total of thirty thousand to uh see if we can't. for a combined total of $30,000 to see if we can't get that accomplished. So and of course, the grand jury, last grand jury report, they conducted a pretty extensive inspection of our facility, actually bringing in a consultant, taking a look and identifying some areas of concern. And yeah, those were highlighted. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you. Another, another big thing too, I'm sorry to kind of go off on a tangent here, but you know, I really want a public safety building that's open to the public. We're just not, we're so small and cramped that for safety reasons, we can't invite people in to do things like open houses and stuff like that. And I think in order to be an engaged community police department, we need to have that facility that reflects that. So all right, thanks for, thanks for letting me step on that stool.
Uh, thank you very much, Chief Ren. Um, any questions for staff on this? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for a public comment. Mr. Call.
Public comment is now open for item 12.2. Um, this is the request for a release of a request for proposal for the combined police and fire facility. So um, let's go ahead and start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Okay. We all, what?
Hello, Sue.
Oh. I'm uh, well aware that our police department building is pretty out of date and it needs, it needs work and to put fire and police together seems like a very logical step. But it seems to me like the 2000 assessment and the 214 update, 2014 update also said the same thing that that's what we needed to do. So I'm wondering why we need to do another needs assessment when we already know what we need to do. And a major part of the need is funding for intervention. Yet another ends in another needs assessment without any funding to implement it seems like a waste of city and county funds. So are there implementation funds available now? And with our economy very uncertain right now, it seems like poor timing for another needs assessment without any funding for implementation. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Sue.
Okay, we'll take last call on this item. Caller 857, go ahead.
Hey, Michael.
Hey, good evening, council. So yeah, Sue just made me look back at this and if this is another needs assessment, I think that's a waste of money. What we need to do is just put, we have documents, put them out to RFP for, you know, potential locations, existing location rebuild, all of that. Let's not waste any more money on study after study. The only thing you need to look at too on that study is combined fire and police located together and a catastrophic event cutting off the head. So, you know, you need to know that during catastrophic event, both services can continue. I fully support getting the police and the fire the best equipment they can possibly need. Looks like that station is built for a city of two to 5,000. It's crazy. Um, but looking at that aerial map, I'm not sure if the current location that this will all come out in the thing. So don't waste any more money on another study of what we need. We know what we need. Spend the money on actually finding the best location and the best proposal for a structure. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Um, all right.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Call. All right, let's bring it back to, to the council for questions and discussion. Uh, let's go with, uh, Councilmember Saragosa.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess I just wanted to know if Chief Cordero had anything he wanted to add to Chief Ren's comments and if either Chief Ren or Cordero had any thoughts on whether there's, there's CARES Act money or anything in this latest the, the last 900 billion that could potentially go toward something like this as well. I know there's, you're sort of far reaching. Sometimes there's, there's money embedded in some of these for even for, for planning purposes that could relate back with COVID. Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can add in to Chief Ren's comments. Good evening, uh, City Council and you know, as, as the police department has issues with, with their current facility, you know, I think Station 25, everybody's aware that building was built in the fifties and it was really never designed to house the personnel that it's housing now with, you know, the duty chief officer, the engine company and the medic unit that's there. So, you know, if, if you've been in that station, you know, the outlay is, uh, is very poor. It's not designed to have personnel actually living there and the facility is aging. It's, it's, you know, around the 70 year old mark right now. So it's been on our radar, um, that it's going to need to be replaced and upgraded. You know, we're doing our best to, you know, keep it going, but again, we stack stuff on top of stuff as well. You know, the big concern will be the funding mechanism of, of getting that building replaced, but we fully support you know, partnering with the Placerville Police Department and having a, a community safety building. It's a joint facility that we can really share some resources, have some common spaces and, and have a public building that, uh, that can be one stop for both fire and police. Thank you.
And I, I just, I want to address a couple from Mr. Drobus and Ms. Rodman. That, that study that was conducted earlier was for a solo police building. Um, it didn't have a fire component to it. So that would be the need, that's the need for the new RFP is the combined facility. And as part of this rollout here, uh, the RFP to conduct the need studies would be the phase one, phase two, after the study is complete, would be identifying potential funding sources based on what those needs are presented to us. So um, that's, that's part two. I think it's a four part plan if I'm correct. Mr. Morris.
If I, Mayor, if I could just kind of dovetail on both those comments, I want to emphasize that what we're talking about here is as, as Chief Ren and Chief Cordero mentioned, uh, the, the report we have right now that was updated in 2014 needs assessment was only for police as they mentioned. We want to add fire to that, but I want to add not just combining Fire Station 25, right, Chief Cordero, but also fire administration is the other piece that they want to add to that. Uh, we have some concerns whether or not that property, and I think this was kind of mentioned, is even large enough to entertain that type of facility. And so this will answer those questions for us. The other thing I want to mention is until we know what we're looking for, it's hard to go after the funding. This is only the first step. This will not really give us all the way that we would need for that in terms of exact drawings and et cetera to know everything, but it will give us some preliminary cost numbers. It will give us um, an idea of whether or not we need to be looking at land and a building or just a building that can be constructed on, on that site. And then finally, I've known for years of being in this business that when you have joint ventures that you can do, cooperation that you can do between jurisdictions, in this case Elrod County Fire and the City of Placerville, funding for those projects are generally looked upon favorably because of that. Plus the fact that, uh, hopefully I'd say this respectfully to Joe, that sometimes funding for fire seems to be a little bit easier to get some, than police is. So we hope that combining this project will provide some avenues for us to get to the, to the end goal, which is to provide a good police, public, police, fire, public safety facility for the City of Placerville. So.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. That pretty much answered all my questions that I had. Does anybody else have any questions here? Yes, Patty.
Cleve, how, didn't we, we, didn't we apply? Didn't we apply for, for funding? And I'm thinking of that as an agriculture. It was the same funding that the sheriff applied for, how he got his funding. Didn't we apply for that?
We, we looked at it, but we never did actually follow through with, with an application, but that, that's one of the, that's one of the potential sources, but there may be others too. So.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for proposal.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you have any further comments, Jackie?
Um, I just, it might have been covered, but maybe I lost it here. Is this study is going to cover potential funding opportunities to, to fund this also?
That is actually phase two. Uh, this is just phase one. Uh, so we'll come back and review that at that time.
But it says the phase one and two are part of this proposal, correct?
Is that right, Joe? Did we go through phase two? I'm sorry. I should look closer at that again.
Oh.
I just see proposal.
Yeah. Oh, you're, uh, Jack, you're talking about in the actual RFP language?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm looking at it and, and there's five, five phases of it, but phase one and phase two are supposed to be part of this proposal, the 30,000, correct?
No, fa- phase two was identifying the funding sources and that would be outside of this needs assessment. I, I think that's something that staff could probably work on, uh, outside of a consultant.
Let me, let me correct this. We, we, we looked at multiple phases. In here you have two phases that's part of this, but if you look at phase one is, is the preliminary design. And then phase two is schematic design. Uh, those are, those will be part of this. Uh, will give us what we need, but it does not go, that's a different, those are different phases, I believe, than what we're talking about for the funding.
That, that's correct. The, the phases, the, as far as the funding are actually in the February 2020 staff report. And I don't have that in front of me, Cleve. I don't know if you have that available. But it, it, it highlights the discussion and how the project will be broken down. This, this needs assessment was phase one of that original staff report and resolution when they enumerated the funds for this. So the, the phase language in the RFP is outside of the, the phase language in the staff report from 20.
And Jackie, for reference, if you look at this, this sheet here, on the top of it, it says phase one feasibility study in space. And it, it does the part of the request for the folds. I have to admit, I was confused too when I first read it because it goes through all the phases and if you open up the pages, all the phases are there, but only phase one is the proposal.
Okay. Well, that, that will get us a, a cost analysis or ideas on cost, size of the facility, the type of, you know, services and stuff that we can provide within the facility, but then the funding portion, once we know those dollars, we'll move into that, that next phase.
So I have a, a quick $5 million question. Is this, or maybe it's an $8 million question. Is there, is there projected funds out there for that we know that we're going to be going after?
There are definitely funds, yeah, there are definitely funds available for loans. As we, as we mentioned, uh, Councilmember Borelli mentioned, uh, Elrod County Sheriff's Department got a very favorable interest rate loan, uh, to build their facility. I believe it was somewhere around 1% is what they, one or less than 1%, some number in that.
1.5.
1.5, thank you. And so there are, those funds are still out there and, and potentially available. But we'd like to look at all options. I mean, again, I want to mention that, that's a loan. So no matter how you, you, you slice it, it does have to be repaid. Um, and so that, that is an increased cost that us and the Fire District together would be looking at. So we would have to identify how we repay that. I believe, uh, some of the current news coming out of the federal government, et cetera. There may be additional funds that will be coming out that, that will potentially be, I would like to think maybe at least portion of grant funding that might be available to move with this. It will make it even more feasible for us to be able to fund the project. So.
And so for, for reference, um, when we go out to to, to look for the, the opportunity to get funding, they're going to want to see this document.
And that's correct. Yeah, that, sorry.
And I know that it's been a long-term goal for the city to, to replace our, our police and now bringing the fire in to co, to co-participate in this process is just adding value to the, to our opportunity. And without this document, I, we won't be able to go to phase two and look for the funding. So you know, as far as our community and the goals that we want to, and this is part of what our future conversations are going to look like is would this golf, would this project fit our goals for our community? And I think over the past many years, it has been a goal of our community and I think this would fit into that. So other, other than having that stated on a piece of paper here, uh, historically, I think Patty being here the longest has known this for quite some time that we have discussed this issue. So.
15 years.
I would say this is on the top of our list of things to do and this is, gives us another opportunity and another way to attract some, uh, I know it's a big chunk of money during this time, but it's a, it's an important way to attract some of the grant opportunities as well as looking for loans. So I, uh, let's go ahead and call for a rule. Ms. O'Connell, there you go.
Sorry, did I, I'm so sorry. Okay. Um, Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All right, go get them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. And now moving on to item 12.3, adoption, adopting a resolution. And approving, approving 9, 905,403 budget appropriation in federal highway infrastructure programs or otherwise known as hip funds. Item number two, approving construction contract in the amount of $2,784,265 for a contract change or, and a contract change order in the amount of 191,930. And item number three, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute necessary contract orders in the amount of 25,000 per change with Verkamp. And then item number four, authorizing agreement with the State California Department Highway Patrol in the amount of $10,000 for traffic control enforcement services. And I guess this gets tossed to Ms. Nees.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Vice Mayor Taylor and council members. Good to see your lovely faces. Um, I'm pleased to bring this item before you this evening for the award of the construction contract for the Western Placerville Interchange Project. This project, as you know, proposes to construct an eastbound on-ramp at Ray Lawyer Drive. This project actually started out, as you may recall, as a potential change order to the phase two project, which was under construction at the time that we submitted the application for the highly coveted SB1 LPP funds. We, you know, we were able to be the proud recipients of that competitive grant and we were excited to move forward. However, following the programming of those funds by the California Transportation Commission, the CTC, we were notified that this project would actually need to be delivered as a standalone project, which drastically changed the path for this project that was originally thought to be for a simplification, a slam dunk. We've affectionately referred to this project as the gift that keeps on giving. But in all seriousness, our project team and, and partners are amongst the most dedicated and thoughtful and experienced and scrappy set of professionals I've ever had the privilege to work with. And so for that reason is why we were able to get this project out to construction. Um, and at the top of that list is a champion for both the county and the city to deliver state and federally funded projects in Eldorado County is the Eldorado County Transportation Commission. When bridging the funding gap became bleak, yet necessary in order to deliver this project, it was EDC, EDCTC along with the support of the Eldorado County Department of Transportation, which brought forward substantial amounts of highway improvement program funds to fund the design and construction. Caltrans also saw the merits of this project and bought for, brought forward its own significant funding in the form of state Safety Highway Operation and Protection Program, or SHOP funds, to help fund, uh, some of the, the gaps and delivering this project as operational components. This project is now being delivered, um, primarily through the use of state and federal funds, which actually brings those dollars into our community. And the remaining amount is provided in the form of local match came from our very own Traffic Impact Mitigation Program, which this project is a designated eligible recipient of that program. The state is a designated eligible recipient of that program. The state and federal funds that the cities had to receive on this project can only be used for this project. Similarly, the TENFEE program funds can only be used on projects that are actually listed in the city's TEN program. The bid documents were released for formal public bid in accordance with Public Contract Code Section 2200. One bid was received from Doug Veer Camp General Engineering, and their bid was determined to have no irregularities, nor was there protest. The bid received was in the amount of $2,784,265 and 56 cents, which was below the engineer's estimate of a little over 3 million. As I mentioned, this project has offered many challenges, as all on-system highway projects tend to have, and with that was the inclusion of several costly items added into the uh, project over the course of design. Uh, one of them was the addition of an HOV bypass lane and a ramp metering uh, to the new on-ramp as required by Caltrans. This resulted in a construction funding shortfall identified in design and contested by the project team. Caltrans was amenable to removing the HOV lane requirement, but because there's no receiving HOV lane, but not the ramp metering requirement, which maintained a funding shortfall for the project. To make up the funding shortfall, the city did proceed with value engineering and was able to implement some cost-saving changes to the plans, but not enough to balance the project budget. In evaluating the received bid, it was determined that the project lacked the complete funding to award the construction contract with proper contingency, and the city and EDCTC reached out proactively to Caltrans to find a way to fund the ramp metering requirement or remove it from the project altogether, since ramp metering at the Ray Lawyer Drive interchange is not identified in the statewide ramp meter development plan. Caltrans Traffic Operations once again opposed removing the ramp metering on the grounds of traffic impact during peak operational seasons and was unwilling to fund the shortfall. The city and Caltrans, along with EDCTC, agree that recreational traffic to destinations located in the county, Apple Hill and Tahoe Recreation, for example, have caused significant traffic, traffic impacts to both the city road network and the local state highway systems. As a solution, EDCTC is going to be proposing programming funding for the shortfall at the February 4th, 2021 EDCTC meeting using local and/or regional transportation funding. This would allow the required ramp metering component to be re-included back into the project as a means of traffic impact mitigation. The city will be making a request to EDCTC for the consideration of those additional funds needing to address the shortfall. In the meantime, Caltrans has agreed to allow the ramp meterage to be temporarily removed from the project through change order number one at a credited amount of $191,930, which drops the contract value to an awardable amount with contingency at a revised amount of $2,592,335 and 56 cents. Should the additional funding become available, the ramp metering will be reinstated as part of the project through a subsequent change order. As such, we're ready to award the construction contract and funding appropriations, inclusive of change order number one, to Doug Veer Camp General Engineering per the recommended actions and staff's report. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for staff? Yes, Patty?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, uh, caduce to Rebecca and everybody. As she said, I, I, I don't think anybody knows the number of meetings and hours spent on these negotiations, and I, for one, am so thankful that you did it, and yeehaw, I think we're going to progress.
Thank you. I'll pass on that, the good comments. Thank you very much.
All right, any further questions for staff, comments? All right, uh, let's go ahead and open that up for a public comment, Ms. O'Connell.
Public comment is open for item 12.3. This is the Western Placerville Interchanges item. We'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Our engineering team does it again. Go for it. Sounds like a great thing you've managed to do. And hopefully they'll get the metering thing back in, and if they don't, well, you know, we've lived without it, so. Damn, fantastic, and thumbs up for our engineering staff. That's all.
Thank you for the kind words, Sue. Let's go on.
Jen C., go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I just, I guess I want to ask a question. I, I hope you can answer it, but I, you know, this is a huge contract, and, and I, you know, it doesn't seem like you guys ever mentioned, you know, that if there are other bidders or not on these contracts, and, you know, it's just to kind of put it in perspective, and honestly, I didn't read. If that was in the staff report, I apologize, but just, you know, just to kind of paint the picture of what's going on with contracting, and um, you know, if anybody else is even bidding on these projects, but, but yeah, you know, it sounds like work is getting done, which is great, so. But I, I, I am curious about the contracting process. Thanks.
All right. Call her 857.
All right, Michael, you up?
Hey, good evening, council. Yeah, so I don't have a problem with the project. I still have a problem with how the on-ramp finishes just before the downhill hard right corner around that hillside. We all know this. I've complained about this before. I think that's going to be a problem. And I find it interesting. So Caltrans has some signage out, drive safely, drive safely, and then there's a, um, a radar sign right at that downhill right-hand corner that has a speed limit sign of 40 on it, and it's registering all the speed limits of 65 to 85 on it right now. So I just wonder, is there going to be a speed reduction somewhere prior to the Ray Lawyer overpass um, in the future, or is it going to be 65 all the way to just before you hit KFC? Um, I know that there's not enough real estate there on that hillside. The cut that back would be very expensive, but I don't know if um, the speed limit reduction from 65 to 40 is going to occur prior to Ray Lawyer Drive, which probably make a little more sense, bring it down to 55, and then down to 40 as you hit into Placerville. So some thoughts there. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
We'll take last call on item 12.3.
All right. Thank you, Regina. Let's go ahead and um, bring it back, close the public comment, bring it back for further discussion. I do, um, let's see. If Regina, could you take the clock off there? Thank you. There we go. I can see Rebecca now. I do have a question for Rebecca. Do I understand it correctly that the 191,000 is the cost of that meter?
Yes. Actually, there's several components that make up a ramp metering system. Um, that one really kind of speaks to the electrical components and the signal itself, and as well as the loop detector loops that go into the ramp. Um, that, uh, there's a couple other uh, expenditures too, and other bid items, but that one was an easy one to just say, okay, we're just going to put this on pause, and we won't order the components just yet. Uh, so that was part of the strategy behind doing that.
Okay. And then as, as we, as we move forward, as we start looking at a motion here, one of the things I'd like to discuss is the idea of, of giving Cleve authority to, to approve change orders up to 50,000 instead of 25,000. Uh, one of my justifications for this is that, you know, if you look at the city of Folsom, uh, their city managers is 100,000, and they're dealing on, with projects in similar size, and this is by all measures, a big project. And um, and it, and it, and it takes up a lot of staff time and a lot of uh, potentially council time to have to come back for an emergency meeting to, in order to keep the project on track if they come up with something that needs. And I have to say, as long as I've known things, as long as I've known it, the city has never, or the council is not objected to a change order, because when they come back, they are appropriate and necessary, and they, and I think everybody, including Cleve and Rebecca, need, have, have good judgment on what it takes to get these projects through. Now, if I understand it correctly, if there's a change order, they still do come back to the council. Is that correct?
That's 100% correct. Yeah, we actually have to either ratify it, or we have, you know, if it's a large enough amount, and you know, we kind of have a threshold of pain, you know, because we don't really want to take advantage of the trust that you have provided to us, and we want to make sure that we um, continue to, you know, um, follow proper procedure and protocol, and specifically law and contract um, in order to deliver these projects. So we're very, we're very cautious and very conservative in these approaches, but yes, when we come back, they all come back. Uh, we, they're either ratified, or they're initially approved before we proceed with the work.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
A, a legal question for John Driscoll. Can we make that change, or would that need to be a separate agenda item?
Uh, no, you can make that change, because the item is on there for discussion. Changing the amount is not going to require a separate agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to say that I agree with um, Mayor Thomas, that I really think that this is, that we should make this change.
Yeah, I, I, I also agree, and I would say, um, and I guess I can uh, put this into a, a, to approve the, the resolution, but what I would add would be uh, the change on item three, which would authorize the city manager to negotiate, you know, 50,000 per change order, uh, up to 150,000. So essentially, it would be three change orders, um, if, if those were to arise, there'd be, it's four under the current um, standard, up to 100,000, at 25,000 a piece, I think. And as the mayor said, uh, this is a big project, and I, I think 150,000, um, I think is, is well in line um, with his ability to, to make those, and then, like, uh, the mayor also said, these will eventually come back to us, as Rebecca also confirmed. So, 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 yeah, so, thank you.
Are we, um, are we talking about just increasing Cleve's ability for these change orders on this project, or on all projects going forward?
On, on this project, at least for my proposal.
Dennis, was that your?
For this one, but.
That was my expectation for this project. There, we have a policy that's $25,000 all uh, overall, and that would be a different conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would like to request that we do consider that for a future agenda item, if that's what we need to do.
All right. Uh, any further comments? All right, first and second, let's go ahead and get a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, can I get a repeat of who seconded that motion?
I did.
It would be Councilmember Barelli.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call. Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
Councilmember Nell?
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
All right. So what's the, um, since we're still right here, what's the uh, projected uh, start date for this?
Well, they'd start yesterday if I'd let them. Um, they are actually already uh, moving forward. They filed the NOI with the State Water Reboard, uh, State Water Resources Board, basically to, um, excuse me, Regional Water Quality Control Board, for the construction general permit. Um, they're actually going to be starting tree clearing uh, in the next several weeks, um, to do that in advance of nesting season. You may recall that that was occurring um, with phase two. We will do, uh, you know, lessons learned are hard and true, but uh, we will be doing a better job of doing some um, proactive outreach to kind of let folks know, um, you know, what's going on with the tree clearing. Um, and uh, what, I did want to kind of mention the CMS boards that were brought up by uh, public comment question. So um, we actually, that's not part of our project. I actually, this evening, was emailing Caltrans about the placement of those CMS boards, because the speed, uh, the radar feedback one in particular is actually uh, not in the right location to receive that feedback. It's further down as the 40 miles an hour, so I, I, we're not a part of that. Um, I actually reached out to Caltrans this evening and said, hey, what are these here for? You know, what's going on? What are we missing? So, um, but we are, um, I just wanted that clarification, because that's not part of us, so.
The radar traffic feedback is, um, was designed to help slow traffic down and help uh, maybe make our argument for not raising Highway 50 speed limits to 55 miles an hour through town.
Right.
Yes. All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Neves. Appreciate your, your work on this, and certainly all the effort that has gone in across the board, and, and we will have the opportunity to express our appreciation for EDCTC, because uh, they, they make, they really are, are a huge part of this team. It's a multi-legged school, and without any one of them, it would tip over. And uh, you know, those guys, Woody DeLorean and his team over there, they do a fabulous. And tracking down all those funding sources, so, uh, thank you, Rebecca. Yes?
Dennis, well, we've got Rebecca on, uh, her lovely picture there. Um, could I ask about the cameras that are being installed?
Sure. Um, actually, that is part of a ITS project that's going on with, um, with Caltrans, and just bear with me for just one moment. I'm going to pull up um, the project description of it, because we actually, it was sent to us um, uh, from the traffic ops, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the gentleman's name.
That's okay.
So, um, so basically, the ITS project will allow um, remote control and timing of the signals. You may recall that the, the hardware, hardware is not, hasn't been in place for years. So anytime that there was traffic signal changing, um, they've actually had to come up and, and physically do it with a, with a heartbeat, pushing the buttons.
Right.
Um, this project actually allows uh, overall broader traffic control from their um, traffic ops center in Rancho Cordova. And so, um, which will be great, because, you know, the, the signal timing, it's kind of a, an unusual thing. They've sat there, and they've tweaked on it so much, you know, uh, the signal, the green signals only go for about two minutes, and the reason why they do that is because if they have a go any longer than that, the impatient uh, cross, you know, cross-traffic movement happens, and you'll, you'll get a lot of red light violators, and which causes safety concerns, et cetera. Um, so uh, Brian Atkinson with uh, Caltrans, who is the chief of traffic operations, he's the one spearheading the ITS project, but the cameras go in first, and then uh, time and materials permitting, um, they're going to be doing the rest of it. That, you know, cabinet and traffic signal components take a little bit to order and get assembled, so they, they, you know, will probably, we'll see them back out here again. They're probably going to be uh, biting off little pieces of it to get it done, but it should be done by the end of this year.
So is the main stabilization right there at um, Bedford? They, they've just done major work on that, you know, that whole corner.
Yes, ma'am.
I wondered if that was the main, you know, where the main box is located, or?
That's probably where the receiving box is. Um, and then, you know, they've got the other three signals. The three signals are connected for their timing, but they're not connected as the three signal package to the traffic ops. This will connect it to the traffic ops, but um, I, I would imagine that the hub is at, at Bedford.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Rebecca, are, are they going to fix the, the light that the, the truck took, the, the big rig took out as well?
Um, maybe, I hope.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Neves. Appreciate it. So uh, moving on to council reports uh, from other agencies. I don't believe that we've had any other meetings on this list, other than maybe Fire State Council.
We, we haven't had a meeting.
All right.
But I would like to uh, reiterate what Sue suggested in her comments earlier, Sue Rodman, um, that we really need to get on top of it right now. Everybody needs to clear their property and, you know, and call for help if they need it.
All right. Thank you, Patty. Um, any other comments on, on meetings there? All right. Uh, request for future agenda items.
I did have a, a comment on the meetings. We don't have a lap go, um, appointee. Perhaps we should have one. How to, when do those happen?
We, that is a great question. Uh, Jackie, that was done in the second meeting of January. And so those appointments are made by the mayor, and uh, so uh, we'll be, we'll be having discussions in the next week and be putting that on the agenda for next meeting. All right. And then, uh, so you, you're happy, you're welcome.
Are you volunteering? Well, I was just like, it's blank.
Yes, it is. Mark vacated that, and I believe our meeting is on the, it's in the first lap go meeting is on the 27th, if I, if I read my calendar correct. So um, we'll be working on making sure we have somebody on the chair there on the 27th. And you bet. Let's see, any other requests for a future? And, you bet. Let's see, any other requests for future agenda items? Yes, sir. Councilmember Saragosa.
Yeah, not, not a future agenda item, but it was one thing I always wanted to say real quick, that I forgot in my opening remarks, and that is January sixteenth, Moore has their annual art and wine. This year, obviously, going to be virtual, their online fundraiser, which is always a huge event for them yearly. And of course, our great friend, John Sanders, is going to be the one also still doing the, the catering for that, so there's still time to get your order in, and I believe the online, we call that the, bit on items, yes, silent auction is already started as well, so residents, it's always a great cause, and they're a great organization. If you can go online to more rehab.org and get a couple of tickets.
All right, that's a good catch. Michael, thank you. Jackie?
I wanted to propose an item if my fellow council members thought it was a good idea. The last couple of years, the council meetings seemed to run late, which also hampers participation, and wanted to know if we wanted to consider maybe moving the council meetings to five PM instead of six PM, so that we could get greater participation before people go to bed.
So.
I have, I have no objection.
Okay, I got three, four heads nodding plus, plus, uh, council member, no, so make that an affirmative, that we can put that on a future agenda item.
Great, thank you.
We'll have to see how it fits in with our agendas coming up. This, you know, just for, just for reference, and when we talk about this agenda and future agenda items, this particular agenda was cut short because of essentially staff time. If you, if you were to look at the appeals, and I, yeah, I have them here somewhere, they were two stacks of paper, the equal, it's hard to see what I'm figures, but somebody, oh, there they are. And, and that, and that didn't happen by itself. That, that required a significant amount of staff time to, to do those appeals, to make sure that they get their record correct from the previous meeting to carry that forward, as well as all the community comments, and, and, and we just, we have to do those right, and they take time. And, and if you go back and you look at in September, all the people that we had retiring, we took a big hit with our staff, and some of those people had, you know, most of those people haven't been replaced. They, we've had some shifting around and employees to help cover, but we are certainly short on, on staffing, and so all these items that our community wants to, wants us to bring forward in a variety of different ways are having challenges getting on the, getting on the agendas, because when you start looking at a packet that you were showing there, all, every one of these agenda items, you know, in order to give it its due diligence, takes time. And so I just wanted to put that out there. So as we start adding more agenda items to, to the agenda and request, we want to be considerate of timing, and, you know, you know, some of them are going to get prioritized because of significance, and we don't want to have meetings going until midnight. I know, just recently, Cleveland and I discussed the idea of having a catch-up meeting. You know, one, because we do have, if you look at the list, it's significant, so that may be in our future too, that could be a discussion at some point. So, thank you, that is a great recommendation, Jackie, and I look forward to having that discussion with you. Any other future items? All right, moving on to city managers and staff reports.
So, let's, let's go ahead. Do you have any questions? We don't really need to discuss fifteen point one, fifteen point two, unless Chief Ren or Chief, Chief Cordero have anything to add to their reports this month, or if you have questions.
All right. Looks like Councilmember Saragosa.
Just a, a quick question for Chief Ren. I just noticed that we had a huge percentage increase on our felonies from December nineteen to December twenty. I just didn't know if that was, we're obviously always a concern to see felonies increased, but didn't know if that was just a a one-time thing, or if that's, you know, what, what that might be attributed to.
It's been pretty on par with, with this past, with twenty twenty, so you know, twenty nineteen, you know, had spikes, but mostly plateaus. What we saw twenty twenty, hit around March, April, we start to see that trend go up, and it's remained pretty much plateaued and consistent. You know, the, the thing that really stuck out is, you don't see any felony H and S code violations. So these are all, these are all penal code violations, which usually translate into some sort of violent act against another domestic violence related, or some sort of assault that, that ends up in you know, a traumatic injury. A majority of those, looking at them this, on Monday, they're no, they're not stranger crimes, you know, the, the victim and the suspect are known to each other, so we can attribute that just to kind of the last year and how trying it's been on, on a lot of people, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, Vice Mayor Kara Taylor mentioned that she had had a conversation with you, and in the conversation about the upcoming possibilities of any kind of violence, you know, surrounding that we keep hearing at a national and state level, are, are we making any plans, or have you heard anything that we need to be concerned about for our little city?
No, not, yes, we make plans, no, we haven't heard anything we need to be concerned about. So we're part of a regional network that, there's a center down in Sacramento, that's an intelligence center that scrubs the internet for keywords, phrases that may lead to acts of violence or civil unrest. If something happens that's Placerville related, we get notified. They send us a activity report, and in that allows us locally with the regional partner assisting to make determinations on what we need to do as far as response for public safety concerns. But what we see right now mostly is, is large metropolitan areas, of course, Sacramento, there's a call for armed protests on inauguration day, which is the twentieth. I know regionally, both our state and local regional partners have opened up an emergency operations center, as well as the FBI. As far as specifics, obviously, the public forum, we don't like to discuss what our security measures would be, but I, I'm confident, based on what we've seen, that if something does, does flare up, we would have the resources available to us to, to appropriately respond to, ensure the safety of the community. But, you know, there, at the beginning of the meeting, during the comments, hundred percent correct, that there's just a lot of hate and rhetoric on the internet right now, and it just fuels, it, it's a back and forth, and it's, it's a never-ending spiral. A lot of that rhetoric doesn't translate into reality, thankfully, but it's still out there causing uneasiness, causing people to feel scared. We understand that. You know, we're concerned at the police department, as much as, you know, for the fear of crime as we are actual crime, so we try to do things to mitigate that. I, I was talking to Vice Mayor Taylor today. I talk to a lot of groups. I meet a lot of groups, and I talk to them. It may upset one group that I talk to another group, but I have to, I have to get a sense of, of what threat levels our community faces, so I'm constantly meeting with people, I'm constantly trying to tone down the rhetoric, and it, it always seems to originate from something on a social media site. And then it causes them to spin up, and then they're in my office yelling and screaming, and, and we try to mitigate from there, but I, I would just warn people, take a step back from social media, enjoy the beautiful community that you live in, love your neighbor, this is a great place to be, it truly is. Don't go down the rabbit hole of, of the internet.
Well, I, I appreciate it, and I, I thank you, and I think you're just doing a great job in trying to keep the waters calm. I have had, you know, people, like you just say, folks that have questioned me about whether, you know, we're anticipating anything, and it's stuff off the internet, just like you're saying, you know, and for even the, the people that don't participate on either side, they're just bystanders, but they're scared, you know. So I, I, those were reassuring words, and thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. I, I love this community. I, I will, I will do what I can to ensure everybody is safe and healthy.
Right.
You almost got me a tear there, Joe. Thank you for that.
Easy to say when it's sincere.
And I appreciate that dedication, that really, I really do, because it's, 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 you know, you don't always get that in a big city, and I know people care all over the place, but you know, when you're here, and it's a small town, and you're talking with people face-to-face on a regular basis, as the, as the chief of police, that that, that, that just, for lack of better words, it warms my heart, so I appreciate you very much, Joe. And with that, I have a question for Chief Cordero. There you are. Chief, Station, Station twenty-one is closed. Has blacked out for services up in, in the Camino area, and I know you have, you have a plan, because you, you just don't leave a space empty, and you have plans for, for cover and to, and how is, how is that affecting, or what does that mean to the city of Placerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's a good question, and, yeah, our, our agency, we, we took a look at our operations. We had a joint labor management committee group that's been functioning for about the last six months, post, you know, measure B not being successful, and trying to mitigate some of our staffing concerns. And one of the opportunities that they reidentified is right now in, in Camino, which and just point of clarification, Engine twenty-one will be going down on the sixteenth. It's still, it's still staffing in place today. But one of the, the areas that we, we saw an opportunity is in Camino, you know, we staff Engine twenty-one with our firefighters, and literally from the front station, you can see the CalFire station, Station twenty on Mount Danaher. They staff one and two engines there that, that run out of that station. So with CalFire, they have what they refer as an Amador Plan, which is an opportunity where the engines that are typically there during the fire season, we can contract with, and, and basically, we pay for the, the maintenance of that engine in the off-season, the non-fire season. So, you know, we, we evaluated that as a potential, and what that has allowed us to do with, with moving in a plan of partnering with CalFire based on that resource that's available in Camino, is the personnel that we currently have on Engine twenty-one, we're able to reallocate those personnel to Station seventeen, which is in Pollock Pines, and Station nineteen on Pleasant Valley. And so what that's allowed us to do is, is currently, those two engine companies were staffed with two firefighters. We're able to upgrade those to three firefighters per day, which brings them in alignment with national standards, and enhances not only the firefighter safety on the, on the engine company, but their efficiency and delivery of services to the community. So, the, the redundancy that was, that was in place in Camino between the, our station and the CalFire station, through that partnership, we were able to capitalize on that. As far as for the city of Placerville, we have in this county what's referred to as an auto aid drop boundary, so all the fire districts, based on available resources, when a call comes in, our CAD system and our dispatch center automatically dispatches the closest resource. So, you know, in the city of Placerville, it's Engine twenty-five. If they're committed to a call, the next closest engine for the core of Placerville is going to be Engine forty-nine out of Diamond Springs. That's a no change. If, if that engine's not available on the east end, you know, your closest engine will be coming out of Station twenty, which is on Mount Danaher, instead of twenty-one. And, you know, on that western end, it's, it's gonna be probably twenty-eight coming up from Shingle Springs. So, there, you might see a, a change in some of the second and third new engines into Placerville, being a CalFire resource in lieu of Engine twenty-one. But, you know, road miles, it's, the other station's about a half mile east of what we're sitting on, on road miles.
Thank you for that clarification, because I know that, you know, I, I did sit on the board of county fire for six, six-plus years, and I know you take this, this call time very seriously, and in terms of how you allocate resources, and, and having three people on an engine going out as opposed to two is, is, is just, it makes a huge difference on, on how you're able to show up. So, you know, with two engines show up, and you have six people instead of four, you can, you can do entries, you can do a whole lot more things that you couldn't do with just two people on an engine, and just two guys showing up to a multi-vehicle accident and being first on scene as opposed to three, you know, the safety of your firefighters, the safety of the public is, is much better enhanced by doing this, so I, you know, I applaud you for, for one, finding a way to reduce your costs, and also to increase the, the safety of our community, so thank you.
Absolutely, and, and just, if I might dovetail in on that, it's, for us, it's, it's not a cost savings. The allocation of the personnel, you know, we're not, we're maintaining the same number of firefighters on our roster as we currently have. It's just a reallocation, and really, a, a better response plan for our personnel, safer, safer manner.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions on this issue? On these two items? Okay, let's go ahead and open up a public comment.
Public comment is open for item fifteen, the city manager and staff reports. We'll go ahead and take caller eight-five-seven. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. So, I just love Chief Ren, speaks plain English, love it. Given this last summer, when Black Lives Matter occupied the courthouse steps downtown, and they blocked the sidewalk, which should be a violation, I would like to see the police enforce the free sidewalk movement, and not allow protesters to, any protesters, I don't care what group they're from, to block the sidewalk. I saw parents with strollers going out into the street to get around that. So if, please, we can clear our sidewalks regardless of who's protesting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right.
I don't see any, hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Ms. Carl. All right, moving on to upcoming items.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I had, if, could I make two comments under city manager reports, just quickly?
Yeah, it wasn't on there. I thought you were gonna say something, but then it didn't show up, so, yes, please do.
There, there's two items actually that, that came up, or maybe three items, I guess. One is the question about the restrooms at the Park and Ride. Those have been locked out, so we don't have a problem with somebody actually getting stuck in our restroom. We did learn of that. And new handles, locks, et cetera, have been ordered or in process to replace, so, so, just want to let you know that, that is in process. The other two questions that came up, or one question at least, was on Clay Street. There will be a Clay Street report at our next meeting. We have been working on that. Just an update on that project going forward. And then the last one, you had requested a vegetation management report. We are working on that and hope to have that one out at your next meeting also. So, thank you.
All right, so we should anticipate a busy meeting on on the twenty-sixth, so, thank you. All right, moving on to upcoming items. Items that tend to be scheduled for the next city council meeting, there's quite a few on here. Some of them were, you know, some, there's some items we are legally bound to do at certain times, and others we've fitted. A survey of the new CIP Giovanni Sewer Improvement Project, Clay Street update. These are potential items, and not necessarily are going to be on the next agenda, is that correct, Cleveland?
That's correct. As you've seen, sometimes they fall off as we move forward, but I just
I just want to make sure I'm looking at this and going, and starting to sweat a little bit here. So there's quite a few items here listed on the agenda, and if you feel so inclined, you can log in and take a look at them. It's a rather lengthy list. So with that, I am gonna thank everybody for bearing with me through my first meeting here, and we'll adjourn this meeting at eight-twenty-eight PM, and thank you all for, for being here.
Night.
Good night.
Night, everybody.